You all have an agenda. Anything, anybody want to add to the agenda? Here none. A motion to approve.
Some will.
Move.
Second it.
And second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Carried. Conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest on any of the items that are on the agenda? Item number three is, we have a couple of presentations. The first one is the Tuscan River Environmental Protection Association. And we have Virginia Smith, who's going to be giving us a presentation, a talk, or whatever. So, mic is yours.
Warden and councilors, can you hear me? Yes, sufficiently. I'm going to read my presentation because I was told I strictly say what I've given you, that I'm told you I was going to say. Humans, for the most part, are responsible for the destruction of habitat for other living and non-living matter. We can ignore our responsibility to protect the environment, or we can do something about it. We have neglected our environment for too long by degrading it, rearranging soil and protective coverings, by destroying animal and plant habitat, by adding chemicals and excess nutrients to our water, and worse still, by throwing unwanted materials or objects into our ocean, rivers, and lakes. It seems that one of the only means for regulating such unhealthy behaviors, besides education, is to pass laws and bylaws which deliver consequences for violating and destroying the natural habitat. In keeping with the council's strategic plan and community sustainability plan, Trepah proposes a policy that will protect shoreline buffers, buffer zones. This refers to a 12-meter or 40-foot area from high-water mark on any lake, river, or body of water to any structure or developed portion of a lot. Infilling or removal of material should not be permitted within the zone except for minimal disturbance or incidental events that may occur over time. The natural flora and fauna in the buffer zones are to remain undisturbed except for modest warbs and/or boat launches. We encourage the development of small boat launches or access routes to areas where people frequently enter a river or lake. Moderate thinnings, not clear-cutting, and sound ecological practices designed to minimize disturbance to the natural shoreline are acceptable, i.e. no infilling. There are many indigenous species of flora, fauna, and marine life in the Argyle area which are, in fact, at risk or in decline due to human interference, including wood turtles, frogs, trout, snakes, songbirds, many native grasses, sedges, rushes, coastal plain, flower plain flora such as the pink Coryopsus in Plymouth gentian and Water Pennywort. The Tuscan River watershed is an extremely important ecosystem and is representative of the type of diverse system that must be healthy in order for humans to remain healthy. There are actions that individuals can take such as keeping shoreline zones as wild as one can by minimizing alterations and construction zones in an area. Other suggestions include avoiding the use of fertilizer and the mowing of lawns near shorelines, creating a single path near waterways using chips or permeable materials, redirecting runoff or slowing its flow, and building modest floating docks. We can avoid building walls or barriers near shorelines. We should be careful what we put down our drains, and we should not be setting grass fires. We should be keeping off-road vehicles off our wetlands and riverbeds. As councilors, you can pass bylaws and amendments that reflect this approach to preservation. We certainly have a new perspective on the value of fresh, clean water in our area. We need compliance from visitors to the community and developers and builders who do not live here but profit from the work that they do without sharing our loss of our vital natural waterfront areas. The municipality of Argyle has many reasons to be proud. We have an excellent waste removal system, an excellent Adopt a Highway cleanup program. We have attractive historical museums holding our records and our many treasures. We can be proud of having one of the only remaining independent general stores in all of Canada. We can be proud of our fishing and agricultural industries. We can be proud to have one of the only rural observatories in Canada. We can be proud of having one of the longest-lasting and as well, one of the first community villages where First Nations people and Acadians lived peacefully and cooperatively. We can be proud to have one of the largest renewable energy wind farms in Nova Scotia. And I'm certain that we can be proud of our new green administrative building when it's built for our future governance. So, let's be proud and take the steps necessary to protect our many valuable waterways. And I have with me a guest scientist who is working, a general, he is our guide with Trepah, John Sallos. And in my car, I have a new brochure that Trepah has printed out on riparian buffer zones, and we're calling them shoreline buffer zones for the benefit of the understanding of average, the average person who wouldn't know the scientific term. So, what we are asking is that you, we already know there are provincial laws in place regarding the 40-meter zone, but we don't believe that these, this is being carried out in the Argyle area, or nor is it being carried out in the municipality of Yarmouth, although the municipality of Yarmouth has now proposed some kind of legislation regarding that matter. And, and a manner in which developers and contractors will be informed about the importance of not building down to the shoreline. Because obviously, if a client asks them to do so and is paying for it, and there is no, and there are no consequences for doing so, they will do so. So, it's our, we feel it's in the best interest of the entire community to have some means for controlling that. And I, I have, I have an interest, and it's not really a personal interest. I do the water testing on Kegashook. And I think many of you know that I'm an avid person in the water, wherever, paddling or swimming or scuba diving. I'm in the water a lot, and I was one of those people who lost my water to the dry, lost water in two locations to the dry climate last year. And despite what Donald Trump thinks, I believe we have climate change and that we all have to be prepared in the long run for that and do what we can, so. So, if you have questions related to the science, John is here to answer those.
Just, I just.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just need a reference to the measurements again. When you first said the measurements for the buffer zone?
Oh, yes, it's, I'm sorry, I said.
Forty meters.
Okay, I said forty meters the second time. It's 12 meters or 40 feet. Sorry, Richard, you're right. I did misspeak, misspoke during my extra.
Additional.
Additional information.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Is there any municipalities within the province that are enforcing these regulations or want similar to it?
I think that Halifax maybe, and I also think Anagunish. I was told today by somebody from the David Suzuki Foundation that those two communities in particular had signed on to the Blue Dot Campaign, which, and one of the stipulations is the right to clean water. And I believe that those two municipalities are, Richard, but I, I don't know. John would maybe, no?
I was talking to Brad today, and he was saying that now, when people in Yarmouth municipality come in to see Roger, the development officer, he makes people quite aware of their shoreline property, that they're not allowed to be playing games within that 40 feet of the shoreline. Because the bylaw went through in 2014, and it's good, and I'm sure it's made some difference, but it's not making enough difference yet. So, this challenge of enforcement, that it'd be really great if the province could strengthen its own regulations that make it a longer, slower ban. But, yeah. Sounds like the Yarmouth is going to be on municipal, the official part. I know when the bylaw in Yarmouth first got discussed, and I think Brad knows the history better than I do, but I think there was some serious debate about it maybe eight or nine years ago. And then, I'm not sure if it's the green water up the belt or not, but when they finally came up with their bylaw, they had two or three public hearings, and they were preaching to the community. I was amazed. Nobody was there to scream and yell against it. There were some questions about how do you enforce it, but Brad said, you gotta start somewhere, and I agree with it. You know, if you have a bylaw, you can make the contractors aware, and they say, hey. Enforcement, the folks in the Yarmouth municipality are dealing with this now, and Environment is supposed to talk to them in September now. It was going to be April, it was June, I think the plan is now September 13th. They're going to be with the Yarmouth Council, talk things over the next, yeah.
But it is, as you said, a provincial law? Is that what you said?
Yes.
But yet, they're not enforcing it.
The provincial stuff is weak. You have the municipal, Clare has something too. Now, I can't remember the details.
Oh, yes.
It's a bit, the Yarmouth municipalities is more different. But, yeah. Municipalities don't have the teeth of the province, so the province needs something a bit stronger.
Right.
And education, because I'm not sure how many developers even consider it, or?
That's one thing. When we talked about this with Yarmouth Council, one of the things John said, John Cunningham, was we need education, and he did have a project at that time. I ran around to every excavation contractor in the municipalities, Yarmouth, Argyle, and Clare. And I went to every school in the tri-counties with this little Bible from hers until the attic. Probably someone came around here to, healthy lakes and wetlands for tomorrow, and I sort of indicated the pages of the contract that were of interest. And we mass mailed that brochure, which has just been updated, to every host office with a major sort of population in the Tuscan catchment. And maybe that had some effect. That was the education part. And maybe that's one reason there was less resistance. But, still, it happens. I think one of the things we need to do is reach beyond Yarmouth, Argyle, and Clare. Some of the contractors come from down Shelbourne Bay or up Nicky Bay, so maybe we'll get the message while we're in the street. A little bit of. I've got a box of brochures in the car.
So do I.
Bring it in.
Shall we bring it in? Shall we bring one in?
Probably not a bad idea to, you know.
Okay. Where would you like me to leave it?
At least, you know.
Okay. Where would you like me to leave it, so I won't interfere with the remainder of your meeting?
You can leave it with me. Virginia will put it in.
Okay.
Okay.
And if anybody's got any questions about that, you guys paid for most of the work for this investigation. Basically, you're seeing Kegashook's the blue lake, and the upper right-hand corner, or the upper left-hand corner is chlorophyll levels, which sort of is those little green guys in the water. It's not big plants, little stuff. In the summer, last summer, it was quite high in Kegashook. Phosphorus levels are still extremely low. That's sort of the lower one on the left, which is really good, except it looks to me as if maybe it's creeping up a little bit each year. There's quite a bit of cottage development there, and if there's a bit more shoreline protection, maybe that'll help deal with it. I've also put it in color, because that's another thing that limits these little green guys in the water. If you've got dark water like Tuscan, you're not going to see so much of that, because the lake doesn't get through. Kegashook is a nice, clear lake, so it's more vulnerable from that standpoint, too. And there's, I think, between Kegashook and Canoe that there's probably lots in there, too, that are just. I guess that's an argument in favor of getting the word on the shoreline for that. The Tuscan River itself, it's like the Nigger tea. It's dark water, but still, the same sort of thing applies. There's rare plants around there that maybe the nutrients won't do damage to. But it's maybe a little less vulnerable to both. And if they have green water, of course, food and property goes.
Is, is Kegashook the most developed lake within our municipality?
Well, that's a good question. I'm not sure, but I just know that I paddle a lot of areas, and I've just noticed a lot of growth on Kegashook, and especially new houses. And there are a number of them I've seen down below the 40-foot, well, not a number, but I don't want to exaggerate, but I have seen new places below the 40-foot, so.
Well, I'm as guilty as anybody. I built 16 years ago in Argyle. I didn't even know anything about a buffer zone, so my lands, my lawns down to where as far as it can go.
You're not alone.
Well, I realize, and I know that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. People obviously are not aware. Mink Lake is not, not, there are other lakes that were, where this is happening. Mink Lake is probably a good example, but that's not in Argyle. Still, it's, it's a real concern.
Well, I shouldn't say that. I got a bit of five-foot buffer, a blackberry, but that's not 40 feet.
Just as long as you know where your septic is going, because that's another offender, if you know.
Yeah, that goes uphill in the opposite direction on a great, big, ugly mound, and...
Thank you, Richard. [laughing].
That's another thing people have, all the green water goes, somebody's got their septic tank down below, and if there is a problem, well, they push it, well, sack out that nutrient before it gets in the lake.
Oh, yeah. That's why we say, leave the greens, don't take them all out for a sandy beach that you don't really need.
Okay, anybody else? No, yeah?
I can just confirm with you that the draft land use and municipal planning strategy that will be presented to the Planning Advisory Committee does include provisions that would be worded similar, if not exact, to the Yarmouth provisions. As we share, we share the planner.
Yeah.
And that was one of the areas that had been raised as an issue for the municipality. So, so that's the start. That doesn't address enforcement, but it just addresses the question.
This would be Brad.
Need any help with public education, because some people will resist. I don't mind doing what we can to help educate, because, yeah, sometimes just a life of awareness, but, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the presentation.
Thank you.
Shall I bring in those goodies?
And yes, please.
Okay.
And Chris will, you will look after that.
I'll prepare one, Chris. It's heavy, it's 1,000, I think.
It's okay.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay. So, now, we have another presentation, and this is from the Comité d'Action de Part de Wetch Board. And we have Terry Lee O'Connell. And you're on.
I'm on, good, okay. Thank you for accepting us today. As you know, I am Terry Lee, and I'm here on behalf of an action committee that was started back in March in Wetch Board. So, it kind of based that, not sure if you're aware, but for more than a decade, there's been, the school committee's been asking for a new school for Wetch Board. I actually didn't realize it had been going on that long, but there's been communication, we have written communication way back to about 2009 and further with the Department of Education regarding Wetch Board and the community. The school is, I believe, 57 years old, so it's been built a long time. There's a lot of things wrong with it, and I can go over the kind of list of deficits, but in summarizing, there's a lot of things wrong with the school, and they've been promising either a new school or major renovations for the past 10 years. Problem with it is, they're not getting the major renovations because they're holding off for the new school. And I don't know if you're aware, but there's been a new list of schools announced, and Wetch Board was once again omitted. So, the SEASAPET kind of had enough trying to communicate that way with the Department of Education, therefore, they requested to form an action committee, and they asked myself, and there is four other parents, yes, four or five, five, on this committee. And we have kind of got together, and we have done a press release and a media release. We have met with the SEASAPET, we've met with the SEASAPET, we've done meetings with the community and other parents. We've gotten a list of the deficits of the school, kind of what the concerns are, what's wrong. And we've brought that forth to the media, and again, to the new, now Minister of Education, and our local candidates or representatives as well. And we've spoken to them, and they're all aware. When we spoke to the new, we have a new arrangement meeting to go with the new Minister of Education, and he, at the time, well, Zach Churchill was not part of that. He was going to look into why, as we look back at the communication that says, Wetch Board will be considered, Wetch Board will be considered, Wetch Board is never considered. So, they kind of ask, why are we omitted? We know we have small numbers, but there was a research done back in 2013 by Real Sasso, Sasso. And he did an assessment, what's wrong with the school, what needs to be replaced, how much would it cost to replace it, how much would it cost to repair it, and what would be the projected numbers of enrollment increase if a new school was built? And the conclusion from that independent research was that definitely a new school was needed, that it would cost pretty much, I think at the time, it was seven million for renovations and 10 millions for replacement, so not a whole much more, and that the renovations would only extend the life of the school about 15 years, because it still had so many deficits. So, that was presented, and again, it was said that it would be considered, and it would kind of go from there. The enrollment at Wetch Board is starting to decrease, and as a small French community, we're starting to get concerned that we're going to assimilate into the majority English language. There is less enrollment, there's less kids speaking French, there's less French, and we've seen other communities around that when your school goes, sometimes your Frenchicating community goes as well. So, that's one thing we don't want. We've also seen in other places of the province, the whole motto of if you build it, they will come. And they have built French, small French schools in places where there was only 12 people, and in two years, it's went up to 200. So, the projected numbers show that if you actually was to get a new school, that the likelihood of our numbers going up. And there's a lot of E-Androis, which I'm not sure what that is in English, but there's a lot of E-Androis, which are students that are, that have the right to study in French that we're losing to some of, to English schools, to French immersion schools, to, so there's a large amount there that was thought, that we could be getting, but we're not drawing to the community because the school is falling apart. And a lot of people want schools that have better technology and whatnot. And so, we've even spoken to like real estate agents that said, like, you know, new schools bring up the real estate of the property, it helps the community, it helps, you know, the infrastructure and the, just the businesses and, and things like that. So, as parents, we decided we were going to try to push forward, and we're going to see why this has not been of note. Wetch Board School has been the top of the SEASAPET list for a new school for the past five years. Therefore, they have been number one for the school needing to replace, and the entire SEASAPET, and we're still not getting a new school. So, our ask was here was to kind of talk, because we're hoping to get different push from different sectors and different areas, that, you know, we want the SEASAPET to go forward and speak to department. We have the SEASAPET writing letters, we have community members writing letters, we have parents, you know, writing letters and talking, and our hope was to have support from municipality as another area of going to say, look, we recognize, you know, our community is being disadvantaged, they're being ignored, and it's, it's not right, and we're not going to kind of tolerate that anymore. So, that's why I'm here.
I don't know if I'm missing anything. Maybe if you ask questions, I'll notice if I kind of missed anything. Yes?
I was looking at one of your map, here. You show Little River, Herbert, Camrose Hill, and Pygny's Point, primarily Acadian communities. The students in those communities, where are they going now? What's the training?
Um, I know they're up where we do have them. Wetch Board is mostly at Wetch Board School, but Pygny's Point and Little River, we've lost them to a lot of the other schools. And when I talk about the, and this was something in the past that I didn't realize, that Pygny's Point was predominantly French. And if you speak to any older members of Pygny's Point, they're all French. And at one point, they lost their school, and the people were given a choice to go to Wetch Board or to go to Arcadia. And they were convinced to go to Arcadia, that it would be better for them, and since then, go to Pygny's Point and find someone my age that speaks French. They've totally lost their French language. I didn't even realize Pygny's Point was French, because everyone I know is English. So, it just goes to show you just the difference of kind of switching the schools out, and then suddenly, but anyone that's like my grandparents' age or whatnot, they're all French, but our generations are all English. And they all go predominantly to like Plymouth, Arcadia, or those areas, but they're all students that could potentially come to Wetch Board, as well as, the district of Wetch Board goes all the way to Stars Road. If you're wondering why were you talking to Zach Churchill, if you're, because we have, to the end of Stars Road is Wetch Board's district. So, there are students from Yarmouth that do go to Wetch Board, and a lot of them go to Belleville, but there's a lot of E-Androis in Yarmouth that we could be attracting. And a lot of them are going to immersion schools. It's not that they don't want to study in French, they just choose different schools.
Counselor Strick?
Looking at that, you said that SEASAPET has had, has the Wetch Board School for the past.
Five years.
Five years. Do you, do you know if they've built any other schools in the system in the last five years?
Yes, but not French schools.
But what, oh, but what, not?
But not French schools.
Well, if it's SEASAPET, it would need to be French.
No SEASAPET schools. The province has built new schools.
I'm sorry, but not the SEASAPET?
No. But it's not, it's, it's not school, like, it's the province that decides who gets a new school.
Right, of course.
And therefore, they've, they've given new schools, I believe, to the SEASAPET and renovated old schools, but there's never been a new school built for, yeah. And there's been, there's been renovations and things, but not a new school built, other than, there's been new schools, but never on the SEASAPET list, yeah.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Are they giving any reasons why?
No.
They're not saying because the enrollment is down, they're not giving, they're not giving any?
They're not. And this last communication was, that was kind of my thing, I said, because I had wrote a letter that, that just came this January from Karen Casey at the time, that says, it kind of says the same thing every time, but in summary, it basically says, we have understand, we, we will consider, and we will put Wetch Board as part of our plan, or, you know, our physical plan, and we will let you know. And then, when we asked, she did say, we have certain strategies, and we have certain factors that, where we pick what school, when we build a school. And my response was, well, what are those factors? Where are we, what is it that we're missing, that why are you not building? But no one's answering us.
Okay.
No. So, they can't, they're not telling us.
Okay. Is there, let's say, that the Wetch Board School was, it's, it's, you can't use it anymore. Are there French schools in the area that can handle the, the population of, of that school?
No.
So, that's, they're not looking at that, they're not, I'm just trying to figure out here what.
No, because we've thought of that, too. Belleville is already overflowing.
Oh, no.
They're, I mean, I think next year, Belleville, I mean, they're looking at two maternel classes, they're looking at two grandeur classes, they can't barely handle what they have now, so they'd have nowhere to put, yeah. So, Belleville is quite going on there, they wouldn't be able to, because I thought of that, too. I thought, they're going to close us down, there's only 100 students, they're going to, but there's nowhere to absorb it.
No. So, it needs, we need a place.
So, it needs its own, and that's been, you know, it's not, but, I mean, out of speculation, we figure it's to do with the small numbers. But saying that, the minority language is still, just because we're a small number, you still deserve the same right as the majority, and you still deserve to have equal education opportunities. So, if they're building new schools for the English school boards, and they're not doing anything for the French, that's being discriminatory towards having small populations, of course, our numbers are smaller. We're a minority group, you know, but it doesn't mean, but it does show the projection of the, that, because they had looked at other schools, and once they build new, how many new people, they had said that had the school been... They had said that had the school been built when they did that initial assessment, I think it started maybe in two thousand and nine. If the school had been built like in two thousand thirteen, that they had figured by now would be almost up to a hundred and fifty.
Oh, right.
So they had, they, you know, the projection shows that if you build, and like I said, they, the SEASAP has a lot of examples of schools starting in trailers with like twelve students up, you know, to two hundred. Yeah, and there's the um, Sue, um, the one in Bridgewater, which was in the name. Yeah, Liv Sue. Like that one there, they just, I mean, it's in Bridgewater. Who would think a SEASAP would work in Bridgewater? But there was people there who were saying, no, there's French people we wanna study. And that school is overflowing, they're full capacity. It's it's boomed out, people are going from everywhere, they they, like, you know, it's, the 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 enrollment is is huge. And we have a parent that's actually at Wetchport that when they moved to Wetchport, that's where they came from. And she said, the school's amazing, you know? So.
Anybody else?
As you who are gonna have to fight to the teeth to get something.
And I know, and I think that's why they kinda pulled in an action with parents, that we could fight differently than what the SEASAP and the SEASAP was being able. But we've decided that we're not gonna let this go and that, you know, we deserve and it's better for the entire community. And we're looking at talking to the federal government to get funding for a whole Saint Communautaire like we have at PEB, where we could get a grandi or where we could get a garderie, where we could get all that. So I mean, we've spoken to the federal government as well to try to get that because we think that it would really do well in the community if we can kinda get that going. And I feel it's gonna be a fight, yeah.
Counselor O'Perry?
Yeah, I was just kind of, that's what I was gonna say, I think that you guys are on the right track. Cause if you don't say anything, you're never gonna move up on that list. And parents have an tremendous amount of power when it comes to, you do, trust me, you do. And I think that the more support you can get, the more letters of support, the better it, the squeaky wheel in this case is going to get.
Yeah, and I think then that's kind of where we're hoping and we're, you know, we have a meeting later with kind of members of the community that have businesses and things like that to say, look, this will even help grow the community and to try to get it from all the different angles.
And your media as well.
In the media, we've got another one coming out, yeah. I mean, we were, we went on CBC, we had an interview on CBC, both French and English, Radio Canada, and we did the locals. But it's gonna die down, I'm sure for a bit, but we're gonna come in with another wave afterwards, like.
So we go to the bridge into Red Zone.
And that's what, you know, that and a school, like a new school and thing and, you know, even the Saint Communautaire, when they got parents together, a couple of years later it was built, like you kinda have to, you you do have to push.
Counselor Wong?
Uh, first off, thanks for your presentation, Terrell. Um, just to add to the presentation, I've I've personally done a walk around the school and the list of deficiencies, we take out on how many pages, it's it's not a joke, it's not, you know, somewhat of a complaint, it's it's a real issue. It's definitely a problem. And uh, you know, this is something that's been muddled over for some time and we will have our hands full when, I should say, when this new school gets built. Uh, because we we all know that it it will potentially be an issue at this table for the ownership of the school. Uh, or if if something gets built somewhere else, uh, you know, that there's, there's potential issue there. However, it's been, it's been said in the community that, you know, because of the headache we may have, you know, that there may be varying reasons how implicated we wanna get into this. But I mean, if there's anything, as a council, I felt through this group, I can't speak for the whole group, is that what's more important than your children's education in our culture locally? So dealing with problems is our job, it's what we do every day at this council table. And I think getting a new school is, should be priority number one. And uh, you know, what to do with the old one, if if whatever outcome comes, you know, if if another school is built somewhere else and there is a school to take ownership of, you know, we'll we'll deal with that then. What's most important is is the future for our communities, at least that's how I feel. And on second component, I have been hearing more and more the 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 way of push you guys have been applying. Business members, the the topic you touched on, on business members saying, you know, economic development, it it may help, it it really would. I've I've spoke to a couple of people, aspects I may not have thought of, uh, I won't get into them this evening. But people would kinda say, you know, i- if it attracts a few more people to the region, it will help uh, certain businesses in the area.
We had spoken, I never thought of it that way, but a real estate agent spoke to me and said, I sometimes have a hard time selling houses in Wetchport because of the school. She said, and in other areas that have new school, people are more likely to move, real estate goes up. And we had never even thought of that angle until she had mentioned it. And I'm like, really? She's like, I have a hard time, and it, she said, people will mention the school. Yeah, so.
It's been something I I've been speaking with with our representative at CSAP for some time now, but there was never such a public push until your group was created. I'm hearing more, like, without me instigating the conversation, I'm hearing more buzzes about it in the community. So keep up the good work and as as your local councillor, where the school is located, that is, that is my district. So if there's anything I can do to help you notify me.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, so that we're clear, you're you're asking council for letter of support? What what exactly is it that you're?
Like, we're asking other people, like even a letter to say, you know, or or some type of support coming kind of separate than us so that they're getting it from other areas and not just the same. Cause as of now, it's really only came from SEASAP and I'm sure they're thinking, of course you wanna know new schools, so does everybody, you know? But it's more than just that, like we have, like, i- if you see the proof that we have from the deficits and the the studies and the communication and how far it's been going back, it's it's really, and even when we had spoke to to Zach, he couldn't, he was like, why hasn't it been done yet? So even, he was kinda baffled at too, the reason. Now whether or not we're gonna get a response from him now is a different story. But that was prior to becoming uh Minister of Education. So uh, but we had thought, maybe, yes, maybe, uh, you know, a a separate push so that we had it coming from different areas. So maybe even a letter, you know, kind of drafted or kinda like us saying that, you know, you're concerned and 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 there's Wetchport and and that kinda stuff and coming from our our councillors might kinda help.
And perhaps go directly to the the Minister of Education, to Zach now.
Minister of Education, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, to kind of have it that way.
Okay.
I just addressed that literature issue, basically two things. One, you pay part of the cost of education in our taxes. And two, you do get stuck with the building. So if you show your support, then that those two concerns are regrouped problems. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, okay.
You pay a part of education and you will, I guess, you will have to do something with that old school. If you're willing to, if you're showing your support in that regard, I think that will help.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, well, maybe.
We should have a motion, a motion for the letter.
And that's something we came probably to later on the agenda?
That's typically what you do.
Yeah, usually you would do that after.
Thank you, thank you.
So, very good presentation, thank you very, very much for coming for the meeting.
Great calls, great calls.
Okay, so now, so we can add that to.
Sixty.
I guess sixty, yes. So now we're at Business Rising from the minutes. Senior Safety Program. Last minute. Okay, so.
Business Rising from the minute. Business Rising.
Yes, yes, yeah, Business Rising. And it's the uh, Safety Senior Program Evaluation.
So there's a a document before that.
Oh, right there, sorry, yeah.
Which includes the Senior Safety Program.
Right, exactly.
So you were right all along.
You were right all along.
That's right there, that's what I was reading right there again.
So the the Senior Safety Program Request for Evaluation is on the agenda, so we'll just, that's the next step.
Okay.
The previous agenda topics for the next meeting, uh, we do have a meeting set up with Gail regarding the Nikhil Dan. I believe it's tomorrow, actually, it's tomorrow afternoon. So that will, obviously after that conversation, we'll bring that to council. Garbage collection cost is completed, but there's um, there's been, we're just double checking the numbers and we haven't been able to finish. Um, we uh, due to uh, uh, you know, conflicting priorities. And so, so that I imagine will come as soon as as soon as possible. We do have a a staff vacancy, uh, not vacancy, but a a leave situation that is impacting that. And so East Pudniko Playground, uh, we're still dealing with some, oh, sorry, I'm thinking, that's the wrong one. East Pudniko Playground uh, has not been uh, discussed as of yet. But the notice of motion was at the last meeting to look into what our options might be. So that has, that has not been completed as of yet.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Council Priority Progress Report. And there's an attachment.
So there is still four A, which is the actual request.
For the Senior Safety, that's not on my agenda here, am I not? Am I missing that?
Four A.
Four A, sorry, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I was, I was putting that with the uh, Business Rising, okay, right. So we need a motion to accept, correct?
I I'd like to move that uh, we uh, ask staff to bring up the uh, safety uh, Senior Safety Coordinator Program Evaluation Report, I guess I had put on my, on my request. I'd like to make a motion that we.
Okay, seconded for that? Moved and seconded, any discussions? Any questions?
Just, just for clarity on the motion, this isn't about, obviously the safety coordinator is evaluated as a person. This is not the evaluation of the person, this is the evaluation of the program. Just wanna be clear on that because any sort of evaluation for HR, we wouldn't be doing, you know, up in camera. Uh, but, uh, and would be my, you, I wouldn't need a council motion to do that. Um, however, it, the program review is absolutely in the control of of council.
Yep.
Okay. So if you're, if you're all clear with that? Question being called, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, carried. Now the Council Priority Progress Report. So you've all seen this. Looks like the Wetchport one is moving along.
Flying, flying now.
Is there any work going on right now, is there actual?
Uh, there are test pits being done, for sure, yeah. We we continue to increase our sign-offs. I did speak with the Province of Nova Scotia regarding the timing. Uh, they've said that they've loosened a bit of the deadline on the other end. Uh, loosen, meaning, you know, months. If you have a good reason uh, to extend the funding, uh, you can do so, so that's good news for that project as well. We're gonna go under the, you know, we're gonna hit it as if the deadline was March. But um, it does give us a little bit more leeway.
The numbers of of uh, people signed up has has climbed quite a bit over here. I don't know if you know off the top of your head, I don't know what it's at, but it's getting closer to forty-four.
Oh, so do you have eight, do you have ten?
No, it's it's in the thirties.
Oh, my God.
I I do have that information.
Man, I do, great.
Where was that, twenty-nine, a while ago?
Better than I thought, cause I, for a while it was slow.
We were worried at first, a little bit, that we might have to do, you know, more of a public uh, you know, push, like Facebook, social media, use those things. And there are a few community members I know are, or, well, our retired bank manager Philip uh, took it upon himself to post it on his Facebook and and that really actually had held.
Good, good.
We had twenty-seven signed contracts as of uh, I would assume today.
We we better not, we have.
If that's possible, I may have miscounted. And, you know, I'm just going by the um, I'm going by the information in front of me and obviously, if it was twenty-nine.
I thought it was twenty-nine and a couple of weeks ago, I guess, it might have been twenty-seven.
Yeah, so some of them have the detailed design, but not necessarily contract signed, so it's uh, anyway, that's good, that's good.
Okay, no more questions on the re- on the uh, report? Other business, Nikhil Board Member Appointment? Hello? I was looking for it, I don't see, I I don't know if I should refresh this because I don't seem to have everything on mine here. There it is, yes, okay. Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion uh, that Mr. Aubrey Hill here uh, serve on the Nikhil Board, replacing um, Hayden Landry. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, aye, carried. Council Meeting Summer Adjournment. We don't generally schedule meetings for July and August.
No, we meet, we don't meet on our regular Tuesday.
No.
Uh, routine, but we almost always meet at least once in those two months.
That's right.
As needed, and we do provide advertising prior to that.
Right.
So I'll make a motion that we, I guess, cancel our our council meeting committee, the whole and regular council for July and August. And I guess meet if if needed, needed, I guess.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, carried. Okay, Letter to the Minister of Education as per the uh, presentation that we just had.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, yes, question?
Question of that, um, does, what does it involve? And I, I, just for information, I'm not, I'm gonna vote for a motion, but what does the old school involve, Alana or Chris? Uh, involved to the, to the municipality, can you kinda?
I I can explain that for you and and for those watching is, any, any school built prior to nineteen eighty-two is owned by the municipal, in in the municipality of Argyle, is owned by the municipality of Argyle. So um, mo- some of you would have dealt with the closure of the SAR School, uh, the Amiro's Hill School was the same situation. The Argyle School, the Quinnen School, all of those schools um, uh, came back to our ownership. And in every instance, we found a buyer for that, for that school. Um, in other instances, um, they get demolished. And in other is- instances, they get substantially renovated to to do whatever, whatever. So what's concerning is, of course, the SEASAP is making a lot of the decisions around the school and around its condition, thinking it will be replaced. But in the meantime, every year that goes by, the the condition of the school that we own is degraded considerably. And so, so, you know, it's it's, those decisions are not made unisiply. And so, um, that's the way it works with these schools. Um, and that's, that's been the history, unfortunately. And um, you know, if they build in the same location, then that's a non-issue.
Yeah.
Because then, you know, it'll be demolished and it'll be built in the same location. More than likely, it'll be in a different location if they build new, so we'll be, we'll be dealing with that. So there's um.
That's the implication.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's financial implications to that. And I know that the UNSM and the AMA have pushed very hard to have the province um, take over um, some of those costs of demolition. I know my own personal suggestion at the time was to, is, was to give um, a demolition grant to the municipal units based on a square footage cost. And if the municipality decided to do something different with it, then it could utilize that money to do something different, but it would be on them. It would be their responsibility, or they can demolish it with the money that they have. Um, all those ideas floated, but I don't, none of them landed anywhere. Um, the the premier, which is still the current premier, uh, did make a statement that he'd be willing to support financially, provided that it was all of them. And so what that essentially does is, you know, HRM, when HRM, when a a school closes an HRM, the value of the property is far greater than the cost of demolition.
Right.
But in rural Nova Scotia, that's not, that's not often the case. So we're at a bit of a stalemate on the issue. So, we're at a bit of a stalemate on the issue, in the meantime, until there's a decision, we have to face the, the possibility that we will be having to deal with this school that hasn't been retrofitted in how long.
Whatever happened to that, and if you don't, so, Chair, like, the, the Yarmouth, uh, Junior High? They're probably building there again, so the province would have taken care of that old school, or do you know, I mean...
For some reason, that school was not owned by the town.
Oh.
There was a, there was, I think it, it used to be another...
Okay, school?
Right, that's, that's right, and so, so the ownership was not the town, and therefore
I get you.
they made the decision to demolish, the high school, the Vikings, the old Vikings High School is owned by the town of Yarmouth.
Yes.
That's why.
And so they, they have a decision to make on that property, whether to demolish or sell, and, and so, yeah.
Thank you.
I should have clarified that we do already own it, but I just meant, in the future, we have the potential of still owning it, right? If, if we build a school somewhere else, um, the likelihood of, of sale, you know, is...
You never know, right?
It's uncertain, there, I, I should mention, there's been interest from the business community, uh, you know, how serious that interest is, I don't know, there's various things to look at, the playground, um, on, on, near the property is, uh, is in excellent shape, there's a ball field there, there's a soccer field there, and we, first, not personally, but as a council, we renovated the tennis court to an amazing standard now, so, uh, there'd be an interesting conversation, to say the least, um, if, if a school was to be built, however, as I mentioned to, uh, Terri, when she did her presentation, it should be, if it's not, it should be, you know, a, a high priority on our list, because as she mentioned, what, what matters more than our culture, and with the numbers and the report she has, it's quite clear what happens when schools like that, uh, just the Pinnings Point story is actually, uh, an interesting story, because what she says is truthful, for, for the language in, in Pinnings Point, anyone, uh, you know, from, I'm not saying there's none, but it's just anyone from the older era is, is primarily French, whereas now they lost it, and I'm sure that was a contributing factor.
I had no idea that was the situation, because people I know from Pinnings Point are French, like, from my age range, and people I fish with, like, the older people, but the younger, I didn't realize.
Anyone my age is definitely English from that area.
I had no idea that that...
Not hundred percent, but darn close.
And if anybody wants to see a worst-case scenario, what can happen with the school, we just don't drive the lower Argyle.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
So, I mean, some, some good stories and some horrible stories.
Anyway, we have a motion on the floor.
Question?
Question called for, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, carried. Correspondents, and for information, we have a letter from Hope, a thank you letter. Department of Health, Cancer Unit Response Letter. Western Counties Regional Library, minutes of March the sixteenth. The Red Couch Tour. Publica Point Trail Association Letter. And Department Transportation Instructor Renewal Communication Response Letter, which we had that. Any questions, any discussion on any of those?
I, I just, I'd like to comment on the, on the Publica Point Thank You Letter, so it's been, uh, this year's been going really well, uh, we finished phase two, they're working on phase three, uh, we've had, you know, groups come and clean the beach, uh, a group from Shelburne that came down, and if you read the, the, the letter, and then, uh, DFO and locals, uh, one other day, and, uh, so, yeah, and, uh, they're, they're building phase three now, and we were originally thinking that phase three was only gonna be like a, a little trail, but, uh, we've got enough resources, uh, with all the, the in-kind that we get between backhoes and all the gear, um, to, you know, to, to make phase three, same, same as, as, as the others, so it'd be good, so.
It's great.
And, and all probably around three, four, five, somewhere around four or five kilometers, and when it's all done, so you could go down there and, you know, do a loop for probably, you know, six or seven kilometers, you know, using the, one of the roads, like, the first road that goes, uh, to the west of where the windmills are, and then you could take phase, I guess it'd be phase three, down the end of the point, do phase two, and then do phase one, which is on the other side of the harbor, so.
Right, very, very good.
We had a, a class that went on a class trip that went to the village, and then they went on the, on the trail afterwards. So that's now being included in their class trip, and I mean, think, it's a school in Yarmouth, and they're going to Publico for their class trip.
Was that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mounted back there almost every morning, and, uh, between the rabbits and the deer, uh, yeah, it's, uh, good ride.
I've done part of it, I actually went down Wedgeport, too. Uh, mention, would Chris like to, or let me read a little bit on the Red Couch Tour? Uh, has everybody read, I'm asking questions for you, Danny.
You go ahead.
Has everybody read the, the email that we got pertaining to that?
The couch.
And I emailed Chris, "That weekend, I'm covering for my boss, trucking boss, so I'll be in charge, and I can't take that Friday off, because I can't forecast whether we're gonna have hair in that tie, and besides, I'm not comfortable doing that kind of thing, and so I suggest to Calvin, but that's up to whoever's in charge of this to, to, to put somebody in my place, but, I mean, we'll let you guys handle that."
So that is actually taking place, it's been, it's, it's booked, it's scheduled.
That's correct, so we're one, we're one of the stops in the Pan-Canadian Red Couch Tour. Um, we're the only rural area in the province, um, they're also going to Halifax twice in Sydney. Um, so it's, it's actually quite interesting.
It is.
We're, we're one of the stops, um, if you look at all the other cities across Canada that they're stopping at, um, so it is very interesting, they'll have twenty, um, Red Couch interviews, I guess, sixty seconds long, um, of asking people what, uh, Canada needs to then, so that'll be July seventh, and it'll be at the Dennis Point Wharf.
But they couldn't possibly use every twenty-one minute segment for every stop across Canada, could they, on their, wherever they're gonna broadcast it?
Afterwards, as, as it explained, they'll be making a video, and they won't be using everyone's, of course, or, or, or the full length of everyone's, um, but they, they use it for different uses as well.
July seventh?
July seventh, yeah, it's next Friday.
At your wharf.
At my wharf, at my spot, yeah.
So as Richard mentioned, if, we do, they have asked us to create a list of people that they will be asking that question to create those, those clips, um, if you do have any suggestions, as Charlene mentioned, just, uh, send them off to her, and, and she'll, um, along with other people, we'll kind of look through the list and, and pick the best ones.
No, very interesting, very, very good to have them stop, stop by here. Any other questions on any of the other ones? If not, we'll move on, Financial Request. First one is the West Publico Athletic Association. And that would be to Calvin.
Let me just fire it up here. So the West Publico Athletic Association is a nonprofit organization within your municipal district, and we are asking, uh, I guess, myself as a councillor for a grant of five hundred dollars to help with costs of maintaining the existing ball field, and I guess that the cost of maintaining this year is, uh, one of the costs of maintaining is a porta potty that they, uh, they installed, uh, I guess, last week sometime, there's, so, uh, we'll be, uh, using that money, that five hundred dollars, plus a little bit of money from, from the minor baseball, uh, teams that got money from the municipality to pay for that, so. Apparently it's already been used, so.
Okay. So are you moving that?
Yes, I'm moving that. I'll second that.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrimined?
It is kinda moving, isn't it?
It is moving.
We'll have to walk that one out.
Publica Point Trail Association, that's, uh, you again, Councilor.
So the Publica Point Trail, which I just talked about, uh, has, uh, they have almost completed, but I guess, co, phase two, uh, is just a matter of putting, uh, signs, and they're working on phase three, but we're looking for a district committee grant of five hundred dollars again to, to help, uh, the completion, maintenance, and we'll add gravel along the old trail and signs and the new, so, and I'll move that, make that a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, carried. East Publico Playground, and that would be Council Board.
Yeah, uh, I'd like to move that we give, uh, five hundred dollars to the East Publico Playground, and that's to, uh, help them, uh, put pea gravel and, and fix the, the box, sandboxes.
And you move that. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, carried, and the Publica Light Monument Society, and that went...
That's mine, too.
To whom, whom may concern?
That place there is, uh, well-visited during the summer months, July and August especially, and, uh, we always put a porta potty there, so they're asking to, for five hundred dollars, so I meant that we gave five hundred dollars to pay for the porta potty.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrimined, carried. We're moving right along. Agenda... Yeah? Do you have something?
No. My eyes light on my eye.
Oh. Agenda topics for next meeting, or notice of motion?
We don't even know when that is.
We don't even know when that is. Question period? Is there nothing on, nothing online?
Wow.
Is anybody watching? Okay.
Good to know.
So, we now have an in-camera session, so...
So moved to go in camera.
Moved to go in camera.
Seconded.
And, I guess we vote on that, all in favor?